Five workers work at $2.50 a day, which was a lot of money back in those days. And they were so grateful for it that he basically just said, well, why don't we just build something up the mountain, figure out what to do with it later, is what it appears. And so it is a monument, not only to this man himself as a figure in Palm Springs history, but also a monument to the Native American and Mexican-American population that built it. In 1961, The Desert Sun actually interviewed some of the people who helped build it and named their names. And they were so grateful that Mr. O'Donnell had built this. And so the significance of Inspiration Point is in looking at the people here, who, when you look at that monument, you look at those rocks, that those were built by the Mexican-Americans and Native Americans here. There aren't many monuments like that, if any. And it's a wonderful legacy for Palm Springs. And to look up at that and know that someone cared and did that for this community back then is something I consider to be a real treasure here in Palm Springs. I think that's my main points. I did also want to point out that when the Historic Site Preservation Board was created in 1979, they were first tasked with name the most important historic sites that need preserving, and Inspiration Point was on that list of the top 10. So I believe that concludes mine. If anybody has any questions or anything.
We'll do that after the hearing's done.
Oh, perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
I'd like to invite the owner to come up, please.
Hi, to all. Just make a comment. The gentleman that just mentioned that it was never intended to be a building site's not correct. Thomas O'Donnell quoted would be one of the most magnificent building sites in the valley. So anyhow, I just caught that as being maybe misinformation being given to you. My name is Brian Foster. I'm here on behalf of Old Las Palmas Point LLC. Our intent has always been to preserve the historic attributes and only modify what is necessary to accommodate future development. When and if any modifications are necessary, the visual appearance of the walls from below will remain visually similar for those concerned. When we received the Palm Springs Preservation Foundation's nomination document, I called and spoke to Barbara Marshall about their intentions. Barbara indicated there is absolutely no intent on their behalf to try and prevent any future modifications necessary to facilitate the development of the site. At that point, we decided to support the nomination with the understanding that we're all on the same page. Then shortly thereafter, Ken Lyon reached out to us, asking if the Historical Site Preservation Board members could tour the site, which we accepted, with the understanding the focus would be on the walls and nothing more. We personally walked the site with the members. There was no discussion of the pad itself being part of the defining characteristics, and rather several members said this will be an unbelievable home site. Later, we find out that these same members decided to include the building pad itself as a defining characteristic, which is completely unacceptable. And to say the least, it felt like a bait and switch. If these people or others in this room would like to render the pad unbuildable, then they will need to purchase the property from us, and they can enjoy paying the property taxes, insurance, maintenance, and other related ownership fees to let it sit undeveloped with no return on their investment. I hope all of you had a chance to review the documents. It is a spectacular site. And again, as I said earlier, our intent right from the beginning was to preserve the historic nature of the property, but obviously not the dirt. That's like saying the dirt in the entire city should be considered historic, and nothing can be built here. So with that said, we just want to make sure that there's not any motives from these people to try and undermine any attempt for the future development and interfere with property rights. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, go to the rest of public comment. The first speaker is Irene Block, followed by Jan Harper, followed by Eukafter.
Hi, I'm Eileen Block, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, not the Preservation Board, in favor of 2B. I've lived here for 20 years, always in and around downtown. In that time, I've seen a lot of things preserved that didn't need to be, frankly. But the hillside vista behind downtown with Inspiration Point at its core needs to be saved. My comments fit into three categories. This lower hillside, including Inspiration Point, is an iconic and historic backdrop to downtown. It's in our postcards. It's what visitors see from hotel rooms. The whole face of the hill is practically a museum of our past. Inspiration Point clearly is. Two, the amount of hillside and artifact destruction needed to do anything on this hillside is completely unacceptable. I'm sorry someone owns it, but, you know, it lords over the city. Three, I'd submit that saving Inspiration Point is a brand issue for Palm Springs. While brands need strategies to grow, they need a steady character to endure. For Palm Springs, we use words like village and town and quaint and friendly, and we value our surroundings as part of that character. We build one-story homes to protect view lines for everyone, and it's the views of our hills we're protecting. If we allow destruction of Inspiration Point, it will be a pimple on the face of our character. If in failing to protect it, we allow a few mega-million-dollar homes to visually lord over the rest of us, it will strike at the character of our very identity. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next speaker is Jan Harper, followed by Eukafter, followed by Tom Jakeway.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jan Harper, and I'm on the board of the Palm Springs Preservation Foundation and also a trustee of the O'Donnell Club. I delivered last week to your city clerk, and I believe you received a packet from me that included something that a lot of other people are going to talk about some things tonight, but I want to talk about the Easter sunrise services. In 1917, Nellie Kaufman and Thomas O'Donnell began the Easter services. When Inspiration Point was built, and I believe we've determined tonight, 1932, it moved to that site. And we continue today to have the Easter sunrise services on the grounds of the O'Donnell Golf Club on hole three and four. That's part of our heritage. We've been doing that since 1917. And Inspiration Point was a major part of those sunrise services. And I ask you to please consider that even today, Easter is coming up. Come out and see the thousands of people who bring their chairs and listen to the sunrise services. That was started by Nellie Kaufman and Thomas O'Donnell in 1917. And today, that's part of the Palm Springs heritage. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Our next speaker is Eukafter, followed by Tom Jakeway, followed by Tempe Isel.
Before I get started, first of all, I would like to congratulate and welcome our new Councilman Woods.
I started you over.
When I first came to Palm Springs in the early '50s, I looked up at the mountain, and I saw this, we called it, back then, we called it "the wall." And in my curiosity, I checked, asked questions as to why this wall? And that's when I was told that Thomas O'Donnell, who came to Palm Springs in the late '20s, fell in love with Palm Springs. And he became, at the time, the biggest financer of elements that were being created in Palm Springs at the time, like the Desert Inn. He loaned money there to develop the Desert Inn and other developments that were starting in Palm Springs at that time. And during the Great Depression in 1929, Thomas O'Donnell put to work a lot of the villagers to build this wall. And also, he had hoped he'd build a crypt in the side of the mountain. He hoped to someday be buried there. Unfortunately, the state of California laws would not allow it, and so it never happened. Am I five minutes up already?
You get two minutes.
Pardon?
Yeah, you get two minutes. The applicant had five.
Oh.
So we're gonna have to wrap up. Thank you.
Am I done?
Yeah, you're done. Thank you.
Because I have a lot more to say.
And please know you can always send us that ahead of time. We do read everything, as long as it comes in before today, because it's really hard on a council day to get to everything.
I have some important things to say.
Okay. We'll move on to Mr. Tom Jakeway, followed by Tempe Isel, followed by Steve Vought.
Good evening. I'm Tom Jakeway, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of O'Donnell Golf Club. We had a number of people lined up to speak when the meeting was going to be yesterday, and unfortunately, they couldn't change their schedules to come to the meeting today. So I'm going to read a letter from the president of our Board of O'Donnell. It's very short. It says, "Members of the Palm Springs City Council, regarding the proposed Class 1 designation of Inspiration Point, gentle persons. I am writing on behalf of the members of the Board of Directors of the O'Donnell Golf Club in expressing our firm support for the Class 1 historic site designation for Inspiration Point, the landmark promontory and wall and pad situated directly above and adjacent to the O'Donnell Golf course. Thank you. Sincerely, Rich Colbert, President." Also, I think somebody passed on to you, we have a list of over 110 members that have signed a petition, and we have a whole bunch of members here who are here to show their support for the designation. And I think it would be very important to include both the pad and the wall. Something could still be built, even if the pad is part of the designation. It would just need to be approved by the Historic Site Preservation Board. And I think each layer of review that we can put on that pad to protect the uniqueness of the environment and the view, and the fact that everybody in town will see whatever gets built there, that it would be beneficial to the entire town if we kept as much support and review and control of what gets developed on that pad. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tempe Isel, followed by Steve Vought, followed by Steve Kaelon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, staff, and yes, Councilmember Woods, I will speak slower this time. I'm a full-time resident of Palm Springs, and I'm here to support the PSPF's recommendation to have Inspiration Point designated as a Class 1 historic designation. In addition, I would like you to review the last two pages of the staff packet where you see pictures of bighorn sheep. They are on the mountain while we're playing golf, but the last picture is actually in a sand trap off of the third hole, which happened two years ago. It was kind of disturbing. I don't like being in the sand, anyway. But I think it's really important that we consider all components when we're looking at this historic designation, including the animals on the hills. Thank you.
So Steve Vought, followed by Steve Kaelon, followed by Scott Lyle, followed by Brian Foster, who's our last speaker, unless someone puts a card in.
Hi, I'm Robert Stewart.
Oh.
I'd be happy to do a scan.
Oh, you're good. You started.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Kaelon, and I'm here also to speak in support of the Class 1 designation for Inspiration Point. And I do think that the pad should be included. It's an important element of what was originally Thomas O'Donnell's estate. It's been broken up now into three components: the Thomas O'Donnell House on the hill, which is on the National Register of Historic Places; the golf club, which, of course, you designated a few months ago as a Class 1; and then Inspiration Point and the rest of the pads. This is the last living link to the two most important non-tribal pioneers that established Palm Springs as an internationally known resort city. Nellie Kaufman, of course, the Desert Inn is long gone, but that site is, should be named, the park should be named in honor of her to commemorate that. And then Thomas O'Donnell, who did so much for this city. Inspiration Point and the mountains should be preserved, I think, always as open space. It's an important backdrop. The views and vistas from the club are important character-defining features of the golf course. The open, unspoiled space is something that all residents of Palm Springs treasure. I do think that allowing this to be nominated as part of the historic designation doesn't eliminate the fact that something could be built there, but it adds a layer of oversight. So the Historic Site Preservation Board will ensure that all the character-defining features that have been pointed out are preserved. I don't think that tearing down the wall and then rebuilding it is historic preservation. So I really want to stress that I think the open space is vitally important, but if something is built, please include the pad in the nomination so that there is some oversight, that that will be sensitive to the historic character-defining features. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Lyle? If anyone else wants to put a card in, please do so now.
Good evening, City Councilmembers and Honorable Members. My name is Scott Lyle, and I reside on Sunrise Way, and I own a Class 1 historical building on Palm Canyon Drive. I've been a real estate broker in Palm Springs for 40 years, and have been associated with this particular property for over 30 years, having sold it twice. I'm uniquely qualified to discuss the property. I speak to you tonight as the Realtor for the property owner. Like all of us here, he too wants to preserve the magnificent wall that is part of our history and is supporting the designation. Even invited the HSPP up to the property for tours, but when it came time for the meeting, something went haywire. On a split decision, they passed a hastily made motion that went too far. We are not here to talk about how this property can be developed. That will come up at some future date, if at all. The HSPP made two overreaching errors. Number one, they made the platform historic. This is just dirt. But by saying it's historic, the property is undevelopable. They also made it so modifying the road would be cost prohibitive and unsafe. Why did they do this? Well, if you watch the tape, you will see that two of the most vocal board members during their discussion made it clear that they personally do not want any hillside development. That was not their duty to decide. So their motion was flawed. Your planning staff has worked very hard, along with the property owner, to correct these two issues and preserve that which is historic while not making the property worthless. If you make the property worthless, there must be just compensation. I urge you to adopt the recommendation by your staff. That vote will forever preserve the promontory while not using the designation to destroy private property rights, something that I and many, many others hold dearly. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Brad Anderson? Mr. Anderson will be our last speaker, unless someone puts in a card.
Thank you. Brad Anderson, I live in the city of Rancho Mirage. Again, I didn't know this was an issue tonight, and I'm a firm believer in private property. I understand views, believe me, I do. But if the applicant or the owner, as he stated, he went along, this was a good faith effort that he did for this organization or the city. And I think bait and switch was used. This should never be an issue for private property owners when they're doing a good faith effort and overreach. It clearly appears to be an overreach, and I oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other speakers. We'll invite the applicant back up for two minutes rebuttal, if you would like. Up to you. Please, you can get two minutes.
If it's possible, really quick, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Kaptur so he could finish.
Exactly.
But I did want to mention it to address what the gentleman said about the magnificent home site. Mr. O'Donnell was right. It was. Everyone would agree that's beautiful. But Mr. O'Donnell didn't build there, and neither did any of the other owners up to this point. He used it for other purposes, including music and the mountain, which was not well-received, and the Easter sunrise services, which were later used for that. So I'd like to give the rest to Mr.
I'll pause your two minutes, let Mr. Kaptur get up there. He'll have a minute and 36 to continue his remarks.
Yeah, I just would like to say, you know, many cities, to preserve their heritage, they have an old town. Well, our old town is our new town, and we've lost a lot during that. We lost the Desert Inn. We're losing other important properties. It's important that we save our heritage. And I feel it's unfortunate that this property is privately owned. It should be publicly owned. And maybe through Proposition J or some of the organizations could come together and contribute money to purchase this property, so that'll be historically preserved forever for future generations. Amen.
Thank you. And with that, we will close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, should the property owner have a rebuttal?
If you'd like, sure.
Yeah.
Property owner wants to do a rebuttal, that would be fine. Thank you.
I just want to make sure that there's not misinformation being provided here. And I think that if you look at what we're really trying to do is support the nomination. I heard some comments about destroying, you know, the walls and all this. It's just not even anywhere near what reality will be. The nomination is to support the large retaining wall that surrounds the pad, and that's not, there's really no need to be modifying that. The only thing that would need to be modified, potentially, would be for vehicular access getting to the promontory lot at the top. And that's it. And that's something that could be taken up with the city planning and the appropriate departments. If it's not necessary to do that, then the wall can remain as is. So all of this concern and all this public scrutiny and paranoia about it is inappropriate to be speaking like that to all of you, when here we are willing to support the nomination in good faith and maintain and preserve what it has been and what it's going to be in the future. And to have a home built there, we would handle, you know, dealing with the planning department and follow the hillside ordinance rules. So I want to make it clear that that's really all that we're here to talk about, is potentially a driveway retaining wall from the first spur road. The other areas are just going to remain as they are. So with that, does anybody have any questions? Someone, I also liked what Hugh brought up, to protect property owner rights, if it's easy for people to come in here and oppose something when it's not costing them anything. But the reality is, money was paid to purchase this lot. There's ongoing property taxes, maintenance, and things like that. And if they want to assume that responsibility, then they could step up and do that.
Great. Thank you.
Any questions at all?
If there are questions, we'll call you up, absolutely.
Good. Thank you.
No other speakers, Mr. Mayor?
With that, we will close the public hearing. And before we get to any comments, just a couple questions, again, for our legal city attorney and our planning director, possibly. Regardless of, you know, what happened to HSPP, and I appreciate getting that information, a lot of the comments were about the importance of the promontory, but there were also comments regarding protecting views from the golf course of their city. We can't consider those in a historic designation. Is that correct?
I don't believe the views were an issue in terms of one of the defining characteristics, no.
Okay. And just staying on the legal questions and doing my best recollection from law school, which is a while ago, but strikes me, thinking about sort of, I think there's this three-pronged test from Penn Central and takings cases, and some analysis on that, if you can give it to us here. If you can't, you let us know. But, you know, it's the character of the government action. It's the impact on the overall site, as far as its financial impact, and then any economic investment expectation by the property owner. And my concern is, and it sort of came up from folks on both sides, that, you know, do we get into where, it's one thing to buy certain parts of this, but it's another to potentially designate it, and does that amount to a taking, given the impact it would have on the property? And I know you can't give us a definite answer, because you're not a court, but...
Right. Well, you're right. The Penn Central test that you articulated very well there is at the heart of what tonight's decision is about, and it is about the very difficult task of balancing private property rights with the rights of the community to important things like historic site preservation. With that said, my view of our ordinance and what it would mean to the development potential of the site, if the council were to include the flat portion of the site as part of the defining characteristics, is that that would very likely constitute a taking of the property. And so that is why the staff recommendation is to not include that portion of the property.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Ballinger, for that comment. The flat part of the property is, how is that zoned?
The property is zoned open space mountain, and so it does allow the development of one single-family home.
And so if that were to come before the planning commission for a request, describe for me the process that the planning commission and staff would go through in reviewing that proposed one home.
Okay. So in terms of the process, because the site is a hillside site, it does require review both by the Architectural Advisory Committee and by the Planning Commission. In our code, our zoning code, in Chapter 93, it identifies certain criteria for review of hillside sites, looking at things as to whether or not the proposed construction blends in with the hillside, the colors and materials being appropriate for the context, things like that. So again, absent a historic designation, the normal process would be through the Architectural Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission.
The Architectural Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission, would they be able to take into consideration the impact that a home being built there would have on the community's views of the mountain and...
Unfortunately, no. Views are not something that is protected by our zoning code.
The proposal that we're receiving from staff calls for an exclusion of the rock retaining wall at the entry gate to the first spur road. Could you describe why staff believes it's important to exclude that?
As I had mentioned in my presentation, just below this site, there are four subdivision lots that require access from that road, as I understand it. Those lots would require fire protection, and so it is staff's opinion that in order to do that, that road may need to be widened if those lots were to be developed. Again, we can't be certain of that right now, not knowing what the ultimate development plan is, but there's a possibility that it could require widening at some point.
And if widening was to be proposed... And if widening was to be proposed, and part of that retaining wall was, would have to be demolished, is that correct?
Potentially, yes. It would have to be demolished.
And if that were to occur, would that be something that would be reviewed? How would one get a permit to be able to demolish that road?
What we would do is look at that as part of a hillside review application. So, in concert with the development of those four parcels, it would go through our standard process of review by the Architectural Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission. If this were designated, it would, of course, have review by the Historic Site Preservation Board, but if not, then it would go through our standard process.
Okay. And--
Quick follow-up on that one, Councilmember Middleton. So, if it wasn't designated, and those homes aren't built, could, and it's not designated, could that retaining wall be taken down, or would it have to go through a planning permit process to be taken down?
You know, that's a little bit difficult, because it's not technically a hillside structure in terms of a habitable structure. Certainly something that I and the city attorney would need to look at in terms of the impact of that existing structure and whether or not it would fall under our hillside ordinance for review.
And lastly, it is the conclusion of staff, that Inspiration Point meets the definition of a historic resource based on Criteria 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Yes, that is correct.
And it is only the question of whether or not the flat dirt part should be included, and that comes back to the city attorney's determination that that could be a taking. Thank you.[991.13][991.13](MUSIC)
Councilmember Woods?
Is my mic on?
It is now, yeah.
Oh, it is. First of all, I'd like to thank the Palm Springs Preservation Foundation for the great nomination paper that was presented to us in the paper. And for those at home, you can go online to the staff reports, and it's a great read just about the history of our city here in Palm Springs and stuff that I was not aware of. So, I really appreciate that. I also appreciate the opportunity to look at the promontory wall from the O'Donnell Golf Club, thanks to the Preservation Foundation members as well, to get a close, personal look at that, to understand the issues. I very much agree with the values that were outlined by all of our speakers tonight, including those of trying to maintain our heritage and our open space, valuing the heritage not only in the built environment, but also in things like the Easter service was brought up. All of that, I think, is very valuable to our history and to be preserved and brought forward, both in the physical of the site, Inspiration Point, as well as in the storytelling of what it meant. The difficulty, and I am in full support of the staff recommendation that's going forward tonight. The difficult part in doing the pad, I think, as we heard from our city attorney, is that it would be a taking. And with other Class 1 projects that we have, or other Class 1 designations that we have given, we've not taken away the use of the property from the property owner. In this case, we would be taking away the use of the, potentially taking away the use of the property from the property owner if we designated the flat area. But I am in total support of preserving Inspiration Point as Class 1. I think the landowner has agreed to that, if I understood him correctly, as well as the retaining wall, and not the first part of the retaining wall, but the rest of the retaining wall there. So, with that, I thank everyone for their participation in this.
Thank you, and I appreciate everyone's comments here. You know, I think, similar to our last hearing, we're acting sort of more as judges here and saying what facts meet the law and the rules, and we have to take all of that into account here. And I'm in agreement with my colleagues. I also think, you know, I think the findings for all 1 through 6 of the criteria are met here. I really want to thank Preservation Foundation. These reports are always so fabulous and such a great read, and so much history is in them. You know, this is currently, as I think we heard, sort of, the flat space is zoned as open space, and there's a hillside ordinance and a lot of limitations on what can be built there, under our current zoning. But taking away that ability, given the facts here and the likelihood that this is a taking, don't seem to be the right fit. So, I'm in agreement with the staff report on this and really appreciate everyone's work, and so, if anyone has anything else? Okay.
I do.
Councilmember Middleton.
Okay. I want to second my colleagues' comments that I really think Palm Springs Preservation Foundation for the work that they've done and for all of the effort that went into this. It's an outstanding piece of work. Who I truly want to thank, though, is Mr. O'Donnell for building what is absolutely a stunning piece of architecture that must be preserved in our community. I find myself in a position where I have to reluctantly agree with staff's determination, but I would enthusiastically support the suggestion of Mr. Capter, that we find a way to acquire this property for public use so that it is never developed.[1266.08][1266.08](APPLAUSE).
Is that part of your motion?
I make a motion to approve the Class 1 designation as recommended by staff, which will exclude the flat, open space promontory and the rock wall retaining the entry gate to the first spur road.
I'll second that motion.
Excuse me? A motion by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Councilmember Woods.
Motion passes 3 to 0.
Great. Thank you, everyone.[1311.65][1311.65](APPLAUSE). And if people can clear out quietly so we can continue, that would be appreciated. The next item is 2C, consideration of a request by Fenton Booth on behalf of Glenwood Management Group for a proposed tentative tract map 37807 for the creation of a one-lot condominium map for a previously-approved 17-unit apartment complex located 2150 North Sangaro Road. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, this is a request for a condominium map for a project that is currently under construction. It was originally intended to be a 17-unit apartment complex on a parcel on North Indian Canyon. It was approved by the City Council in September of '27, and again, all the applicant is requesting to do is to file a condominium map so that the units could be individually sold. The condominium map will not result in any physical changes to the property, but what it will allow is the individual sale of the units themselves. The condominium use is consistent with the zoning and the previous approvals for the project, and so, it won't modify any aspects of the project. In addition, the submitted condominium map is consistent with our code requirements for map review. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of this item at their November meeting. However, they did ask for a recommendation to the City Council that the City Council reconsider the deferral of the off-site improvements due to the change in use. In terms of the deferred conditions, they are as follows and identified in the staff report. Engineering Condition #4, relative to widening the street along the entire frontage of the project. Engineering Condition #5, the requirement to construct a new eight-foot-wide sidewalk along the Indian Canyon frontage of the property. Engineering Conditions 7, 8, and 9, which detail the requirement for the construction of a 14-foot-wide median in the middle of Indian Canyon. And then, Engineering Condition #10 associated with that, the repavement of the street relative to those improvements. So, again, the condominium map that has been filed is consistent with the city zoning code. It is also consistent with our map requirements, and so, staff is recommending approval of the request as submitted. That concludes my report. The applicant is here and is available to answer questions.
Great. Any questions for staff and councilmembers?
Yes. Director Fag, can you talk a little bit about when they first approved this and they deferred the maintenance, or excuse me, deferred some of the public improvements? The rationale behind that and why that rationale might not hold up today and why we may want those improvements built at this point in time?
Some of the improvements required, excuse me, required improvements were deferred when the project was originally approved. The median requirement actually came later and was requested later by the applicant in April, I believe, of this year, is when the City Council reviewed that. At that point in time, the City Council deferred the construction of the median based on the fact that the applicant was constructing market-rate apartments. That's something that we haven't had in the city for quite some time, and so, in supporting the project, they deferred the construction of the median.
Yeah, and I would just add, one of the things, being on the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, in addition to wanting the market-rate housing, allowing it to be deferred, was also that selling condominiums, money comes in quicker than rent over a period of time, was also a factor we discussed in being willing to defer it.
No more questions for me. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Middleton.
Mr. Fag, has the developer accepted the changes that are recommended by the Planning Commission?
No. Again, the Planning Commission only added those as recommendations, not as conditions. It is really a matter for the City Council to recommend on the deferral of the improvements.
So--
They have not.
They have not accepted, or--
No, they have not discussed that.
It's not been discussed with--
No. The property owners were not there at the Planning Commission hearing. They had a representative there instead.
So, we will have an opportunity, as they give their report, to find out whether or not they are accepting them.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. The applicant will have up to five minutes to present their case. If requested, the applicant will have two additional minutes at the end for rebuttal, and the public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to eight minutes. So, if the applicant would like to speak.
Good evening. My name is Fenton Booth. I am the manager of Glenwood Management Group, the owner and developer of this project, and my partner, Linda Usher, is here as well tonight. You know, this relatively straightforward project has morphed into a long odyssey for us, and I believe also for the city officials working on it as well. In the end, the project and the new street improvements that we're building on Zanierho Road will be a great benefit to Palm Springs, but a short history of what has led to these additional costs and delays will show why we're not able to support this 17-unit project with market-rate rents. We have determined that a larger site with less conditions and different unit types are required to achieve new construction, market-rate rental housing. And what we found in this smaller site is, in this townhouse-type of unit, that there are larger units, and now with the rental rates having to be average about $2,800, ranging from $25,000 to a little over $3,000 a month, in order to make the mortgage and taxes and expenses work, we have talked with a number of brokers and a number of experienced people and who have really told us and feel that that's out of the range of, in the long-term rental proposed, you know, rental market here currently in Palm Springs. A little of this brief history is, you know, we closed on the land three and a half years ago in 2016 and feel that we've worked diligently since then. When we, the property was landlocked with access only from Indian Canyon. We went through the city's pre-application review program. We then designed the project, and it was reviewed by the AAC and the Planning Commission with approval recommendations. Prior to our required City Council hearing at that time, the city added a new condition that we acquire an easement or title to whitewater canal land from the Desert Water Agency adjacent to our land and construct a Zanierho Road right-of-way from the corner of Villa Esquela, past our adjacent neighbor's property and serving our property.